For meeting. And in attendance.
Oh, that's nice. I feel the heat from here.
Yeah. It's just taking a while.
So, beginning at nine o'clock, we open up for public comments. Those folks who don't have a specific agenda item or an appointment, and I know we have someone on Zoom. Ms. Quentin?
And Jan Williams just jumped on.
And Jan, okay. Do either of you have a public comment for us this morning?
Uh, it's Evie. I just, I was just interested to follow you guys. Um, I did have one concern. I haven't seen any advertising for lifeguards for the summer on program. And I know Quickey was hiring a couple of months ago and they're getting like nineteen bucks an hour. So, it's gonna be challenging for mine. But I thought maybe now would be a reasonable time to put something out.
Okay, thank you, Evie. We'll get back to that later. Um, I believe we've already done it, but we'll get into more detail at a.
I just haven't seen anything, so.
Right, okay, thank you. And Jan, do you have anything for us?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Rich?
Yes, I do. Actually, first, Deana, could you turn up the volume on that? It was, it was hard to hear the people on Zoom.
Maybe it's the TV. Let me see.
About lifeguard.
I, I heard it, which is very hard to hear, and so.
Had to pay close attention.
Yes.
What'd you say, Ben?
Okay, and actually, I do have a substantive question, which I'll ask while we're playing with the technology. Um, I wanted to know, it looks like the agenda's gonna talk about the town committee handbook?
Yes.
Um, and I need to leave it to him.
Okay.
So, is, would it be possible to schedule that discussion prior to ten o'clock?
Uh, we shall do our best if we can.
Okay, that's all I can ask. And you published the rest of the audio recording anyway, so I can do it there.
Right, okay.
Um, good. And has there been, have you distributed the draft of the town committee handbook yet?
We're still working on it, so it's just here.
Thank you.
Has not gone out to general public. It's very similar to what it was before, so don't expect some life-changing thing.
Gosh, I hope not. It is.
We do try and keep it simple when we can. Okay, have we, anybody?
The whole is not working.
Yeah, all is not working.
Yeah, I was just, um, looking because it seemed like it wasn't.
I think you had to say.
Okay, technology.
There you go.
Yeah, that's on, no, that's just mute. But, um, I know it's on.
Its little eyes aren't lit up. Maybe it's not plugged in.
It's got to be, cause it's making all those noises.
Well, as with all our friendly flocked friends, it has a mind of its own.
Technology, we love it.
Okay, then we're gonna move right along. We have, yeah, if we're really gonna reorganize. Where are we? We've got you, Alicia?
Yeah, Alicia, yeah.
Down at nine fifteen, and it's only nine oh five, but you probably wouldn't mind going early if it were live.
That would be great, thank you. And I can get back to work, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
For welcoming me here. Uh, I'm coming on behalf of the Lime Foundation. Um, as a group, uh, we thought it would be really nice for the green to have some chairs and a picnic table, um, for people to enjoy the summer and eating, you know, outside, visiting the country store, Stella's, and being able to sit as families and friends on the green. Um, we, we don't know how this would go, so we are proposing it as a trial period um, for the, the town, the select board to decide if it's something that would continue or not. Uh, the types of chairs that we would be purchasing are the recycled plastic that lasts a long time.
The heavy-duty.
The heavy-duty ones, so.
That take an arm and a leg to lift.
Exactly, exactly.
Otherwise, we might get winged.
Exactly. Um, so, so we are proposing to purchase those and make your guys' um, uh, support.
So, do we have, um, do you have an idea of the numbers that you're proposing?
Um, I believe, uh, one picnic table and six chairs.
Okay.
What color would these be?
So, we were thinking either brown, or the forest green, or gray. So, something more earth tone. We don't want anything, um, bright and flashy. Um, and I don't know if you guys have a suggestion as far as the color. We, we, it's, for us, we just thought a really neutral tone and all the same.
Mm-hmm, all the same. And, and so, um, what do you think, Ben?
Well, I was looking, driving by the common last night, and there's benches out there, and they're, you mentioned Adirondack chairs. Of course, I can't get out of an Adirondack chair.
So, there's two heights. We were thinking of giving some with the lower height and some with the higher height.
Well, they go back like that, or it makes them pretty dark. But I, you know, if they were, the chairs were made more keeping with the benches that are already, already there, that was my thought.
Okay. Uh, I, I'll have to look at what the benches look like.
Yeah, they're, they're nice benches, the ones that are out.
They're wood, wood slatted.
Oh, okay.
They're that teak, it's teak wood.
Teak wood, yeah.
Yeah.
And.
David?
More in line, more in line with the style of them, that's all.
Thoughts?
That seems like a nice thing to do to me. I, I, I don't know, we may hear from people who object to the, object to it because.
Yeah, we hear from people who object to everything, I know.
It seems okay to me, I would go for it.
Okay, have you considered where they would go in the wintertime?
Um, so, they can stay there.
Yeah.
If that, they're the type, I have them at my home, and I've had them outside for probably six years, and they're, they weather fine. Um, so they could stay there. We haven't considered where they would go unless you guys told us that they weren't no longer, they had to go.
Someone on the Lime Foundation have a big barn?
I don't know.
Why, pre-requisite?
Cause you wouldn't want them there over the winter?
It's, it's hard to say, but typically, we get the snowmobilers that go through, and we have, as you know, the Christmas tea tree project, and
Yeah.
Sometimes there's a skating rink, so they might become in the way.
Okay.
And the only other thing is mowing.
Well, I'm getting to that.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm just thinking about Adam.
So, one of the things I thought was, yes, about the mowing, and since I do the mowing, everything you have to move takes a while, and you move it here, and you mow, and then you move it back, and it might be if they were gonna be, I think people would enjoy them. We might need to either do a slab of some sort, or a piece of bluestone, or something, so the mowers can just go around them, and the grass doesn't grow up in them.
I did something at my office with this, so I, I, cause I agree, the mowing, I was like, oh, my mowers won't be too heavy, and they'll have to re-whack around it. And so, we excavated out, and then, um.
Or a slab?
Yeah, we put, actually, just stone, and then edged it, and put some, like, trees and stuff around it. But I didn't know if you guys would want something that involved.
I don't think we.
And you would pay for it, I think, as a foundation, but we don't know, it would be more of a permanent thing.
Yeah, it would be permanent. I suppose we could try for a year, and if it seemed to be, although, the other thing is with chairs, I've noticed the benches move a little bit, so the chairs would probably move depending on who wanted to use them. And if six people got together, they'd put them together, so that's a consideration, um, and.
We could try it for a summer and then see.
We could, we could try and see, and if there was a permanent place for it. The other thought I had was, um, I like, I've noticed over the past couple of summers that the benches tend to end up right across the street from the country store, which is fine, except it does encourage that area as a crosswalk, which is kinda dangerous. And of course, we're trying to let people know that they're not allowed to park there, which at least that makes it so you can see the people if they're crossing. But the picnic table, for me, I have concerns with it. I just think it's going to encourage people, people sitting, eating, getting up, walking away, and leaving their garbage.
Could it go someplace not near the country store and go someplace near a garbage dispenser? Because we haven't decided, we haven't said as a group, oh, we think the picnic table should go here. We thought we would talk to you guys, and then maybe even talk to Sean and see what.
We don't have garbage pickup.
Okay.
So, I think we don't wanna encourage, if there was a garbage pail there, I'm sure we would get dog poop, garbage, all kinds of other things, and then.
That might be good, actually, because maybe we wouldn't have so much of it on the green.
Or show up in the cemetery.
I think for my part, I would like to go down and kind of walk around and have a look-see. And I did drive around yesterday with this in mind and look, but feet on the ground and six chairs, and maybe instead of a picnic table, maybe smaller tables by where the chairs are. So, you could still have a gathering, and you could still have a table to put things on, but you're not. And don't get me wrong, I love picnic tables, and I love eating out, and I think any encouragement we can do for people to visit the Lime Country Store, and Stella's, and, um, the tavern would be wonderful. But I am also mindful that we have an issue of crossing the street. And people can kind of loose through there, so.
No, they're always gonna cross the street, even.
I know there, but when you encourage it, you get more people doing it. Maybe that's better, maybe if there are more, people will slow down.
Cause why, we need a fence on that side.
Yeah.
You hear the kids come up from school and cross the street, and that's, they're constantly now.
Yeah, I've, I've been there when it's been really busy, but, okay, Rich?
As a member of the public, I wanna say I, I support this idea, I think that's great. I think, especially as a trial for the first year, letting people move them around will, will find out where they belong, especially the chairs. That, uh, I think the picnic table is really interesting. And so, I would encourage the Lime Foundation to go ahead, I would encourage.
You're talking here.
Yeah, and, and I would encourage the select board to take this on as experiment, let's see what people do with it. And I, I think it would be popular.
Oh, I'm sure it would be popular. It, it might be, but more of a challenge for town functions than we anticipate. But appreciate the offer. I think we'll take a couple of weeks, and our next meeting is in two weeks. I think we would hope to have a decision for you then, we'll have another discussion. And you can tell the folks at the Lime Foundation, we thank them very much.
Okay.
I think it could be a terrific addition to the common.
Thank you. Um, I might not be able to be here in two weeks, my schedule's probably already filled. Is it okay if another representative?
Oh, absolutely, or we can make a decision if you, we'll send you a email.
It's not mandated to, it's somebody else.
We do like having the presentation in person.
And then I do want to, um, ask, the picnic table we had in mind was, um, I think it's octagonal, so it's, is that, if you guys do agree with a picnic table, I wanna make sure that that's okay, that it doesn't have, that it's not a traditional, or, you know, like, whatever you guys, obviously, whatever picnic table is okay with us, but that's what we had in mind, and I wouldn't want it to be a surprise.
And those are delightful and very heavy.
Very heavy, it would have to be re-whacked around, and the foundation also thought it, we would provide the additional funds for the, um, the mowing, if you're, the person mowing said, oh, it's gonna cost now an extra fifty dollars every time I mow, um, the Lime Foundation would pay for that.
Okay, thank you. So, we'll try and get a handle on that as well.
Thank you.
All right, that's a great offer, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming in.
Yep.
Can we have only people come in with stuff like that?
Yeah, I know.
Fun stuff, yes.
You know, if you could start screaming.
Okay, oh, okay. I do ask what they wanna come in for, sometimes they don't tell me, so.
Okay, so guys, we just wanna think about it, drive around the common, and we'll make a decision next meeting, which is May fourth. Okay. So, that was nine fifteen, yes?
Now, I have a question for you. You know that, uh, schedule of meetings that you sent out?
Yes, sir.
And then as like dates where somebody's missing or someone's on vacation? On those dates where someone's missing or on vacation, is there no meeting, or is it just meeting without that?
No, I was just making you aware of who was gonna be missing at times that I knew over the summer. Because if somebody else takes a vacation day the same day you do, then you have to reschedule your meeting.
And, and we have done both. We have sometimes rescheduled, and we have sometimes had meetings with two people. Do you have a preference?
No. I wouldn't be either way, but, um.
Okay. All right, so, um, let's move to the way down at the bottom of the agenda, the library solar bond, since.
And in the spirit of the meeting, I'm here to save you two thousand dollars.
Good way to start, Jim, I like it.
I see you've been in public service before.
Yes.
Okay, so, give us a brief explanation, and then we'll have a brief discussion.
Uh, I think Mark summarized it well, but, um, the law is that municipal projects don't have to be bonded if they're under a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. This, uh, project is closer to sixty-six, um, and it's a local, uh, construction firm, Catamount, and they've been putting these projects up for the last decade plus. And work, the, the only subs are usually the electrician, and that kind of relationship over a decade of putting successful projects up, we feel confident that there wouldn't be a need for a sub to come after Catamount for non-payment, or delay of payment, or what have you. So, um, we certainly have the money raised to cover the bonding, but we'd rather spend it elsewhere.
So, the cost of the bonding is two thousand dollars?
Roughly.
And they are willing to do it?
Uh, Catamount was one of the ones that included that and said, if you have to bond it, here's the price, so, um, yeah.
Is there anybody who could come forward and say, hey, you told us we had to bond it, and now you're not requiring a bond? That would have disadvantaged us, and, and so we think the process isn't fair.
No, cause in the beginning, in, in the RFP, it was in there.
So, everybody who bids, bid.
Speak to the bonding issue, yes.
Included the bond, and, and now we're just waiving it after the fact, it would've been the same for everybody.
I believe four of the six included it, two didn't, um, and they, what they said is, I don't think you need to do this. So, they just didn't put it in.
Well, we didn't pick one, and one of those two that didn't put it in.
Okay.
We picked somebody who had the bond.
Had the bond in the.
You know, what's our lawyer gonna say about this?
Bond it.
She already asked.
She already, I already asked, I talked to Naomi.
Is there?
And of course, she was, well, first off, it was about what was required in the RFP, but then after, it was just, you know, the RSA requires a bond over a certain a hundred and twenty or twenty-five, whatever it is. But best practice is for a municipality to require a bond.
Uh, I have to say, for my part, it's always the one that you think you don't need it for, that you end up needing it. And being a municipality, people sometimes would take advantage, cause they figure it's not an individual who's gonna squawk, and they're not gonna worry about whatever. I hate to have that kind of an attitude, but it's kind of where I'm thinking. So, based on the attorney's take and my hesitation, I for one would like to see the bond.
You said the bond cost is two K, two thousand?
Yeah.
Roughly. Yeah, our attorney is telling us that we should do it. I hate to spend two thousand dollars that we don't, and you're right, there's probably better places we could spend that money, but I, I hate more to go against the advice of council.
And it's really not about looking at it from a negative point of view, it's about looking at it from, you're just doing the best to protect the town, that's all.
So, um, let's get a consensus.
In other words, personally, we wouldn't get the bonds, but because the town's involved, we will.
Correct.
That's kind of where I'm coming from.
Yeah.
I think it's our obligation. So, we three are, I don't think we need a vote, but I think we need consensus, we're good with requiring the bond.
Yeah, sorry.
We're very sorry, and we thank you for that, Judy.
Thanks for, you know, I mean, obviously, to try to save the money, but.
And certainly relate to them that is not, has no relationship to their reputation.
I will do that.
Okay. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay. I could really hope to talk about the handbook at the end of this, but, um, let's go a few more minutes, and then I'll try and pop it in before you have to leave. Just cause I think the discussion's gonna take a while. Okay, so we have some minutes to be approved. Public minutes of April sixth, non-public of April tenth, and non-public of March twenty-seventh. What do we wish, do we wanna do these all at once, or we wanna take them one at a time?
I wasn't here for the last meeting, so.
Okay.
That, those public minutes, I can't, I have to abstain.
Okay, so.
Should do them separately.
Then we'll do them separately. I'll move the April sixth minutes. Ben, how do you feel about those?
Uh, I'll second it.
Okay, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Judy, aye, and David is abstaining. Okay, so it passed. And then we have March twenty-seventh and April tenth, non-public. I will move the March twenty-seventh.
I'll second. Or we could do those together.
You wanna do those together? Okay, I will move the March twenty-seventh and April tenth.
I'll second.
Thank you, David.
Ben, aye. David, aye.
And Judy, aye. Okay, those are approved. And, um, moving down on the agenda, I think it's just a reminder that we have some safety changes that have been instituted and are being instituted, and one of those changes includes limited access to the offices, and especially the vaults. So, some folks who may have been used to just being able to kind of wander into an office, and then into the vault to get materials, we are limiting access there, and it is kind of universal. We will have, or do have, a statement of what that access is, and some of the other safety measures that I believe is going to go out to committee chair persons. It did go, Deana says. So, I just wanted to again make that announcement, so someone who wasn't aware of it is now hopefully aware of it, doesn't come in and feel like, all of a sudden, they are especially being limited access. We have a manifest to review and approve. The manifest is in the amount of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars and five hundred and seventy, no, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirteen cents. Uh, what do we wish to do with this?
I'll move it.
Second.
Thank you, Ben, all those in favor say aye?
Ben, aye.
David, aye.
Thank you.
Do you have to abstain because Harvey is on?
Oh, well, that's an interesting thing. I guess I should. I just see that chaos computer got a little, uh, checky-wacky.
Probably the best to do.
I think that is best, so.
Although, it's not made out to Judy.
That's one of those, it won't go into Judy's hands, I could tell you that.
I don't think that's standard for, uh, legal conflicts in there.
That's, that is.
Okay, then. That's interesting. Um.
That's wet, but it gets outside, you move it in the way, so.
I have a couple of things too I have to go to a point.
Okay. Let's see, Lime Center Academy, do we have an update? We have a.
Oh, that'll be quick.
Request for the utility club, and a request for the historians.
Yeah, the historians one is not really, um, there anymore. Uh, they are giving their insurance certificate, and they have said, we can pay.
Okay.
So, I don't know if you wanna consider that.
So, we don't need to consider them, they're gonna meet all the requirements?
Yeah.
And the utility club is asking for a request for a fee waiver.
Correct.
Well, I would like to suggest, I think that, uh, they are really part of the town, even though they're maybe technically not a committee. They do the Christmas trees, and they do a flat, a plant sale, and they do.
And the Christmas trees, and I would assume, um, this meeting would fall under the rec committee umbrella, so, at least that's.
So, they're covered anyway.
So, they have, right.
I've been to some of their meetings, they're not really rowdy.
No. No.
So, we're not too worried about the place getting wrecked?
Slit and fall is more of a concern. We can't be tricked.
So, what do we, if, if they fall under the rec, then we don't need to waiver anyway?
That's what we decided, we changed that in the policy, remember? I remembered that.
I guess we don't need to do anything with either one, they're both.
Well, you need to vote to request a fee, waiver of fees, cause we don't really have the authority to do that, but, if you wish to waive it.
Yes.
I'll move it.
Okay, David.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ben, all those in favor?
Ben, aye.
David, aye.
Judy, aye. Waiver of fees.
For the utility, uh, for both, okay, good.
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
Easy peasy, lemon squeezy.
Well, that's what the building is for, too.
It is what it's for, and it's nice to see it used.
It sure is.
Okay, we have the MS two thirty-two.
Yes, ma'am.
Which is just a different, it's a report to the Department of Revenue Administration. It takes our budget that got approved at town meeting, lays it out in a slightly different fashion. And we're approving the total they came up with. And.
Three million?
Three million, nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
That's it.
Um, and I went back through and I checked, and it looks to me like all those numbers are correct. Of course, by the time I got to the end, my eyes were a little crossed.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, well, the only thing this does differently with them than our regular budget is that, you know.
There's one thing that got added in, I thought.
In here?
Yeah, it came from a different place.
Well, that's what the DRA makes me put, like, we track block grant on budget, I have to have it in the highway budget here, so it can increase.
Right, yeah.
Mill foils in conservation, even though it's a separate.
Right, that's, those are a couple of things I know just came from a different place.
Yes. More concerning.
So, what do we, are we, um, ready to sign the MS two thirty-two?
No, a little bit.
Okay, Ben.
I'll second.
Thank you, David, all those in favor?
David, aye.
Ben?
Ben, aye.
Thank you, Judy, aye.
Doesn't it look like it has a place to sign it? Do we need to sign it?
Yeah, we need to sign it.
On the very, the very front page.
I didn't email you, I had the cover page, cause I just didn't.
Okay. Okay.
I think I'm, just make my signature X. Careful not to wet.
The other thing you can do if you're curious is you can take our, um, MS seven thirty-seven, which is what we reported for the Warren articles, and as long as this total matches on this page, that total, it's right.
Yes, ma'am. I went line by line.
You're so good.
Wow, thank you. I could tell my dog that, cause he was anxious to go out for his walk.
Uh-oh.
He had to wait. All right, intent to cut, we have two intents, two. Alright, intent to cut. We have two intents to cut. Ben, what should we do with these?
They're not, they're not really big ones.
I will second those and we've got a, uh, map four oh seven lot eighty-four, a supplemental intent to cut. And map four oh seven lot seventy, just a regular intent. So, all those in favor of these two intents to cut, say aye?
Aye.
He was coming around.
And Judy, aye. Approved.
Uh-huh.
Okay, da-da, da-da. And we have a report of wood cut. Um, that's a nice little check.
Uh-huh.
Six thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty cents.
That should be noted just for those who think that current use doesn't pay anything.
So that was a current use lot that got cut?
No, oh, my, yes, it was timber harvest, sorry.
And we, we, those with current use are taxed because that's what you're doing is growing trees.
Right.
So as you've got them.
Okay.
And that's the value of your lot. Once your trees are gone, the value of your lot goes way down.
It's timber.
Yep.
Until the trees grow up again. And that's sixty-five years.
Sixty-five?
Yeah.
I was gonna guess forty-five. Alright, you're, you know more about this than me. Okay.
So that's a nice six thousand dollar change check comes to the town. I don't think we need to.
And did somebody move that, Ben?
Oh.
Seconded it? Did I miss it?
No. I will move it.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ben. All those in favor say aye?
Ben, aye.
David, aye.
Judy, aye. We need to approve taking in a check that's.
I just want to know that like when we get these things, Dina distributes them, they always look, everything is like neat and copied and these all look like they've been through the.
It's been in the loggers' truck for days.
Yeah, yeah.
Grass stains.
Working.
You don't have to vote it. It's because it has a warrant that goes with it and goes to the tax collector. So anything you warrant has to be voted.
Okay. That makes perfect sense.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Add those to my collection here. Okay. So. We have two solar exemptions. Map two oh one lot ninety-seven for fifteen thousand dollars and map four oh seven lot twenty-four for thirty thousand dollars. And, um, I will move those two.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Ben, aye.
David, aye.
Judy, aye. These, uh, I did look through, they seem to all have met the criteria. I know they wouldn't come to us if they didn't, but I did double check them.
Excuse me, Judy, I got behind. Can you tell me the two values?
Uh, I sure can. One is fifteen thousand dollars and the other is thirty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, then. We have two.
So where do we, oh.
Right there where the yellow is.
Two veterans credits. And I don't have a monetary value on either.
Oh, that's pretty.
They're each five hundred.
Five hundred, yes, I remember meeting that.
This is, like, I already signed with print.
You just, that's okay, just sign and then we can print your name next to it.
I will move the two veterans credits. Me in a second. And, or David, you want to second the veterans credits?
Uh, sure, I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Ben, aye.
David, aye.
Thank you. Judy, aye. And that is. That is approved. Look. We are up two.
You got another one?
Is this a veterans?
Judy, have something specific for us?
Yes, I did. I have one thing that I need to ask you.
Okay, before we move into the.
Oh, that'd be great, if we do it. Uh, we had the two thousand, international two thousand and eleven had a fairly expensive breakdown. Um, the repair bill is six thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. So Scott is, um, requesting that I ask the board if that money can come out of the emergency vehicle repair fund. There is thirty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars in that fund as of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Can you tell me a little bit about what happened? What, what the nature of the repair is and what the breakdown?
It was. They had to remove the wing plow. They had to remove a lot of things to get to the injector, remove the injector, clean it. It kept, I think it kept stalling, it wouldn't, wouldn't stay running. Um, here, you know what?
Read it.
Why don't you just take these invoices and review them?
While he's reviewing that, Dina, we have a very old vehicle part up at the, um, uh, highway garage. I thought we were going to get rid of it. Do we know the status of it? No.
No, it's probably more my fault than anybody's because I think the idea was to just slap a little ad out, you know? Minimum, the best, best offer, something like that, because it's really not worth much. So I will do that.
That'd be awesome. Thank you. It's springtime, you know?
Right, exactly.
Everyone is cleaning out all of the stuff.
Right.
Okay.
Add for total, I think it is.
Is that what it is? It's an S U, SUV, right?
Yeah, or it might be a Chevy, yeah. Anyway, either one.
It's old.
Oh. Yep, and then after that I have a, uh-huh, one more thing. Do you want to talk about that or wait?
It's a short.
Yep.
Okay, go for it while he reads.
Um, you have Ben King, who's been a monitor, rec area monitor for the last two years. He would like to be rehired again for this summer.
Let's do it.
He was what?
At the.
Beach monitor. I mean, I mean, the rec area monitor, the ones that sit there, yeah.
And so you're right there on that. Um, I know you could update us very quickly on, you have advertised for lifeguards? You did that back in February, I believe.
Yeah, I've put it out at least, I don't know, three times. And there is a, um, job wanted ad on, um, the webpage. Um, there is an ad in the New Hampshire Municipal Magazine. I've put it out to the Orford, Stepford, um, Lime, Listerv. More than once.
What's the age of the lifeguard?
So, we've gotten one interested call.
What's the age of the lifeguards?
Well, you have to be sixteen or more.
Sixteen or more?
Yeah.
Would it be, would it pay off to go to the high schools?
Well, I don't think I can go to the high schools, but I can certainly get somebody at the high school to put something on the board or something.
Yeah, hmm, want to be.
We'll save up, yeah, I don't know. I'm happy to do. Last year I called everywhere. I usually call and I haven't done that yet, but I call Storrs Pond, I call the Upper Valley Aquatics, I call CCB. Just to tell them if they have lifeguards that come in that they either can't offer jobs to or that are still looking to call us. But again, it's still.
It's very tight.
A shortage. There's a huge shortage of lifeguards still.
I'm sorry, Judy, just to jump back to this, uh, truck repair, the thirty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixteen cents that you have noted on here, that's the amount in the emergency repair.
Correct.
It's not the amount of the bill.
No, the six thousand is the amount of the bill.
Panic says, Ben.
Um, so anyways, yeah, we are still trying with the lifeguards. Trying, trying, trying.
And we will need more than one. We can't do it.
Correct, right.
Yeah, just wondering, is at the, at the school, there would be somebody who could talk to a broader audience.
Yeah, maybe. Sean?
Judy, I just have a question for Dina. Do you know when they're gonna remove the rest of the skating rink from the pond parking lot?
I don't have an exact date, but it's been mentioned.
Just because I fear that somebody's gonna drive on it and throw it.
Correct, right. Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, we, the question is, do we want to approve a withdrawal from the emergency vehicle repair fund for six thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-five cents?
Withdrawal from the emergency.
Okay, Ben, thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, David. All those in favor say aye?
Ben, aye.
David, aye.
Judy, aye. So that's approved, Dina.
We zoned our trucks in, that'd be a bill about the same.
Can you read through that? There's a lot of crap wrong with that truck.
Sean?
This is the lemon.
Yes. Judy, I don't know if I need to say anything about the additional cost to the Tascow bill, but I just wanted to clarify.
Do you have a number for it? Or you want to clarify?
Dina has the bill.
Yep. Okay.
But I just wanted to say that, you know, when, uh, the original proposal came in, we did not have added a camera in this room.
Right.
And when they did that, that's what increased the cost.
By three hundred and something?
No, it was probably like sixteen hundred.
Really? Okay, so that included wiring and all of that?
Yeah, I think it was setting, putting one more camera in here.
Okay.
I can't, I don't have the bill with me and I can't remember exactly, but it's nine thousand something.
I think it's ten.
Or ten thousand something.
It's ten something.
Yeah, because it was eighty-five.
Ten thousand one something, yeah.
Okay. So, fifteen hundred-ish, plus or minus. Um, we did approve it, even though we didn't know that number. So do we want to reconfirm that we're still approving that addition of this extra camera?
I'll, I'll move that number.
Okay, thank you, Ben. I'll second it. All those in favor?
Ben, aye.
Aye.
And Judy, aye. So we've reconfirmed our approval of that. Thank you for bringing that up, Sean. Now.
Yes, thank you.
The fun part. We have a committee handbook. It's for committees, commissions, boards. Everyone. We've made some slight changes to it. And I'm hoping you guys had a chance to at least review it. One of the impetuses for this change was, um, a, a discussion that we had earlier this year, two thousand twenty-three, about whether or not we can use the Listerv. And so the N section sort of clarifies that any subscriber as an individual is welcome to use it. There are some other changes. Um, yeah, these are great. Thanks for, uh, this draft. It does note the areas where we made the changes, but it doesn't show all of them in detail. This is a final. Dina and I have been over it several times and we went over it again yesterday or Tuesday. I'm not sure which day.
And this one includes David had some, some, um, minor.
Changes as well.
His are, his should be on that, many of the things, but.
Mostly just little.
Mostly, yeah, typos.
Typos and edits, great, okay. I, having spent many hours on this, and Dina too, I would like to go ahead and approve it as it has been revised and then we can make copies and share them with folks. And I know that Rich Brown would like a copy. Did you have a specific comment you wanted to make, Rich?
Um.
Short one?
Yeah, so, um, as someone who has been, I think it's fair to say severely chastised for posting a note, um, to the list as an individual. Um, and knowing that there's one other person who has resigned a committee because they were severely chastised by a, a committee chair. Um, this directly affects me. Um, and so I, I actually had come to terms with this policy as it was stated, having, um, looked at the RSA's, having actually spoken to, uh, the folks at the New Hampshire Municipal Association. Um, and they, their guidance was, just don't do it. And, um, I, I came to terms with that. And so I think the ability, so, I, I have conflicting, uh, conflicting responses here. One is, as a personal matter, it does free me up to offer, uh, offer opinions on on the specifically on the Listerv regarding areas where I care physically, planning board. And the second is, I'm a little surprised that town council said this. But that's for the people to decide.
Town council said what?
That, as town council said that it would be appropriate or if not, it would be acceptable for people to post personal opinions on the Listerv in matters where they, um, they are in a public body. So that's, uh, that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. David?
Uh, two things, I guess. Uh, my view on the specific question that Rich is raising is that it, uh, it would be inappropriate, I think, for somebody who's on a, a board or a, a committee to be posting personal opinions with respect to a matter that was before that board or committee. I mean, it would be like a judge commenting on a, on a case that's before him or her. I mean, and, and that, I think, would apply regardless of whether or not it's the Listerv or it would be any, any sort of thing like that. You, you know, you, you, um, on the other hand, I don't think people give up their right to comment as, you know, forfeit. Agreeing to, to do hundreds of hours of free work for the town of Long does not cause you to lose your First Amendment right to comment on things that are of importance to the town. Just my view on, on, on the sort of substantive question. On the procedural question about how we move forward with this, if we're, since, if we're amending this in a way that impacts people or that people might be concerned about, I, it seems to me that, as much as I'd like to be done with it, I, it would be better to, to, uh, to prepare a red line that shows the changes that we're making to the thing and, and, and put it on the town website and let people look at it. And then, uh, maybe if people have comments or strong views about it, they can express those and we could decide on it. We could vote on it at the next meeting.
That's easy to do, yep.
I think that's perfect. It's like having a little public hearing, but not really a public hearing about it, you know?
Right, so I think that's a good suggestion. Ben?
And I have the one, oh, Ben, it's still marked and.
The red line, yep, great. So if you could just pop that onto the website and then we can take it up on either the fourth or the meeting after the fourth.
Give us a chance to hear from our fan club.
Yes. That's great.
Thank you for, for both those.
That's a great suggestion. Um, sometimes we get involved in what we've been doing and how long we've been doing it and it's nice to hand it off and be finished with it, but that's a great suggestion. So the next meeting is the fourth. We could take it up then or we could wait till the, well, the eighteenth, you'll be out of town. So we either do it the fourth.
That's perfect.
See how many comments we get. I'll be curious.
Well, let's wait and see. If we have very few, we'll just take it up on the fourth. Otherwise, we'll take it up June first.
Right, you might have to consider some of those comments, so.
Um, so.
You know, it, it's always annoying to be criticized, but sometimes people catch stuff that you're glad they caught in the long run.
Well, and you, when you work on it for a long time, over months, sometimes it, uh, because this was actually in the works.
Oh, yeah.
Before this year's town meeting. And Dina and I have been working on it for at least a year.
Right, and, and it's, I don't look at it really as criticism. I look at it. Right, and, and it's, I don't look at it really as criticism. I look at it as you know, everybody has a different take on things and sometimes you just don't think about one way, you know?
Yep. So, um, okay. Do we have do we have other things? I know we've got like a 10, 15 actually for a non-public. We could, we have another non-public. After that, we could take it before. I don't have.
The 10:30 can't come.
Till 10.
Till 10:15.
10:15, right. So we could do, let's, let's move into non-public. Rich has to lead anyway and, um.
We've got before your deadline, that's pretty good.
You guys are terrific. Just in case nobody said anything nice about you today. Or ever.
Well, before you go into non-public.
Yes, wait.